And a lot of people have this view of police officers or deputy sheriffs in schools that they're there because the school is no good and they need the police there to straighten things out. That is the 100% opposite of why school resource law enforcement is there. School resource law enforcement is there first and foremost for the safety of the school, the students, the staff, administrators that work there. There's also a benefit of being out in the community. Out in the community, making relationships with people in the community, making relationships with the schools, and being there in case something happens. Most part of the day, a school resource deputy is there on the campus. They act as mentors, they act as counselors, teachers sometimes. A lot of things that I did were 100% complete opposite of what a law enforcement officer does. A couple of things that I did was they had few distributions in the town of Alvin, not Avonale, Stratford, on a monthly basis. And there were a few citizens in town. And there were a few citizens in town that didn't have a car, that were in walkers or something like that, and they couldn't come down to the school to pick up their allotment of food. So what I would do was I had a list of people that I would make deliveries to in my patrol unit. That's just a little thing that school resource officers do. Basically, they act as a resource for the school. To help the school run better, safety of the school, safety of the students that are there. And they are there to be a resource, communication between the community and law enforcement. And I'll close up with this. It doesn't just happen when you're on duty. I was at home, like 9:30 at night, watching one of my shows, I forget which one it was, and I got a text from the principal of one of the schools. She told me that she had an issue, had a problem, and she wanted my advice on it. And what it was, was there were two pre-teen girls that were speaking over TikTok or Instagram or something to this other student at the school that was kind of like a new student. And this new student was having a difficult time, and she was talking about doing harm to herself and killing herself. And these girls knew me from the school, but they didn't know how to get ahold of me. They didn't want to dial 911. They talked to their mom, there was a language barrier. The mom had the principal's phone number, so the mom called the principal and spoke with her. But those students trusted me to get them help, to get that girl help. And what I did was I contacted our watch commander, explained the situation to him, and we were able to get the beat deputy out to the residents and get the girl help. And followed up on it the next week at the school to make sure that she was getting help with the school counselors and everyone. But that's just the thing. It's not just that the officer or deputy is there because the school is bad. They're there to help, be a resource between the community and law enforcement and everyone. So that's what I had to say. I wanted to say something positive about law enforcement. I was not asked to do this. I just wanted to appear as a citizen of the county and kind of give a point of view of what school resource officers or deputies actually do. And that is keep the school safe, to keep the students safe, and to help students. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
And just for the record, we are live on both WebEx and YouTube now. The next speaker is Kristi Lovekey.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Kristi Lovekey, Deputy Director of Kings County Behavioral Health. I wanted to come back, the department wanted to come back and talk to the Board of Supervisors to let them know that we did come on August 15th to talk about the conclusion of the Mobile Crisis Planning Grant and the new Medi-Cal Mobile Crisis Benefit. And sorry. And so during that presentation, we let you know that we were rolling into Phase 2 of the grant, which is the infrastructure part of the grant, and that we'll be coming back with that grant agreement. At that time, it was for about $300,000 that was left of the planning grant. Since then, we've been contacted by a grantor to let us know that the results were so well done that they would like to offer us some additional funding that they've received back from some of their other grants. So now it is an additional $1.5 million that's being offered to the department on top of the $300,000 to help with the infrastructure of mobilizing our crisis services. So we look forward to bringing that agreement before the board when we receive it from the grantor. But we really wanted to come and just say that they were able to see the commitment by our community for mobile crisis, based on all of the community feedback and all the partners that we had participating, and we have even more infrastructure supports coming. Thank you.
Thanks for the thoughts. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lisa Lewis.
What I may have.
We're meeting chairman, valley members of the board. Lisa Lewis, Kings County Behavioral Health. I'm here this morning because I just wanted to spend a minute to express my deep gratitude and appreciation to Katie Arns, our Deputy Director of Clinical Services. Katie's going to be leaving us to move to Oregon. She's actually leaving at the end of the week to take a really great job up there working for our county and also moving, and a lot of new things in her life. Katie's been with the county for over 10 years. It was 10 years in June. She's been the Deputy Director of Clinical Services in our department for five and a half years. Katie was willing to take on this particular Deputy Director job of clinical services when we didn't have a clinical system and she had not been a clinician. So it was a very brave thing that she did, and she was willing to take it on, and I have so much gratitude for her. When she took this on, we had many managers overseeing many parts of the Mental Health Services Act, but we did not have a system of care. Since that time, all those managers have been spread out through our department. We have one manager that oversees the Mental Health Services Act, and all the other seven managers oversee various aspects of the mental health plan, which we oversee. Katie took on the clinical services, which was adult, the adult system of care, the children's system of care, psychiatric care, and substance use disorder care. So she has helped us in the last five and a half years develop five clinical programs: the ACT team, the MOST unit, which is the adult psychiatric care, a SpearNet, the KIND Center, and now children's psychiatric care. So a lot of development in five and a half years and a lot of hard work. In addition to that, Katie has learned so much clinically. She is able to bring together staffings with folks from psychiatric hospitals, a patient who might be in the psychiatric hospital, who might be a youth, somebody from the foster care system, a family member, our own medical director, myself, the treatment team here, all on case consultation calls and facilitate them very effectively, making sure that all their appropriate questions are asked. This is something that you don't learn overnight, and Katie has developed great skills, and we so appreciate her. I so appreciate that she developed the view that our client's care comes first and everything we do is guided by that and quality of care. So I just want to say thank you to Katie and let you know what a huge amount of accomplishment she has had here at Kings County and personally what she's meant to us. She's balanced out our team in such an important way. Katie has a great memory for details and a great memory, period. And those things are really good and very helpful to me as more of a big picture person. So I just wanted to say thank you, Katie.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lewis and the County of Kings, the Board of Supervisors and Administration. I am so honored to have the opportunity to serve the County of Kings and to support its community members. I will be back. My parents live here in the community of Hanford, so I will certainly be back and hope to see everyone around the community. But truly, it's been an honor to serve and to get to know this community, to get to love this community, and I'm sad to see it go. I am not sad to miss out on 115-degree summers. I do look forward to a little bit cooler summer, and just a huge thank you to everyone. It's been wonderful.
Thank you for your service, Katie.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kiria Martinez.
I would like to ask Megan and Matthew if they can come to the podium. Kiria Martinez, County Administrative Officer. I am here this morning to announce that public comment, an internal promotion, and a new hire. Megan Vega is our new Deputy County Administrative Officer, and Matthew Boyet is another Deputy County Administrative Officer. Matthew actually is a promotion. He's been here with the county over 10 years, working his way through departments and administration, has been here the last two years. And Megan Vega comes from West Hills College, as in from the budget and procurement official. And so we are super excited to have the team, and I just wanted to take this moment to introduce them in public session. Matthew, Megan, if you want to say a few words?
I'll go first. So Matthew Boyet, Kings County Administration. I couldn't be more excited. I've been looking forward to continuing to be home here at Administration, and I'm excited for what this county has going forward. This is, for those that aren't here yet and work here yet, this is a great place to work. I've enjoyed working here over the last, you know, almost 11 years now, and look forward to continuing to work here. The county is headed in a great place, and I'm humbled to be part of the next phase in this county and to continue to work with Kiria and to now get to work with Megan. We've, all three of us have only been together such a short amount of time, but we already make a fabulous team, and lots of great things to come from not only Administration but from the county, and just glad to be a part of it. So thank you very much, and thanks to Kiria for trusting me to be on your team. I will not disappoint you and do everything I can to make sure I exceed all expectation every which way you look. So thank you very much.
Good job. Congrats. Morning, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Megan Vega, like you heard, and although I'm new to the team and new to the family, to County of Kings, I am not new to this community. My mom is from Kettleman City, and my dad is from Avonale, where I grew up until we moved to the big city of Colinga. And so I am really excited to serve in this role and to serve our community and be a part of the bigger discussion. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'm excited to work with the team as well. Thank you.
Welcome.
The next speaker is Daniela Peralta.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Daniela Peralta. Durante muchos años he vivido en Avonale, California. Soy un residente de ahí por muchísimos años. Y como promotora y trabajadora de salud comunitaria en Valley Voices quiero solicitar amablemente para atender mejor la necesidad de nuestros residentes que enfrentan barreras y que no pueden hablar inglés. Mi trabajo como trabajadora de salud comunitaria es ayudar a todos aquellos, a todos aquellos que necesitan ayuda. Antes de trabajar en Valley Voices trabajé en muchos trabajos diferentes, de trabajo agrícola y empacadoras. Yo al igual que muchos paisanos me ha tocado batallar bonito para sacar para el pan de cada día. Mis experiencias y interacciones con mis compañeros de trabajo y miembros de la comunidad me han hecho muy conscientes de los desafíos que enfrentan para ceder a los recursos en el condado de Kings. Muchos residentes luchan por participar plenamente con los recursos y programas públicos vitales debido a barreras que no pueden hablar inglés. Estas barreras pueden resultar en malentendidos, acceso limitado a la atención médica, recursos educativos, y servicios legales. Y en última instancia, obstaculizar el bienestar general de nuestros residentes. Al proporcionar servicios de interpretación podemos cerrar estas barreras de lenguaje y promover para todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad. Estos servicios facilitarán una mejor comunicación y mejorarán nuestra capacidad de proporcionar información esencial y oportunidades, y oportunidades de participación en comunitaria a todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad, independientemente del idioma que hablen o incapacidad que puedan tener. Entiendo que la implementación de servicios de interpretación puede requerir una asignación de recursos, pero creo firmemente que los beneficios a largo plazo superarán ampliamente los costos. numerosamente, subvenciones y recursos disponibles a nivel estatal y federal pueden ayudar a financiar esas iniciativas. Amablemente invito a la junta de supervisores del condado de Kings a considerar la importancia de implementar servicios de interpretación como un paso esencial para construir una comunidad más inclusiva y equitativa. Este movimiento no solo empoderará a nuestros residentes, sino que también fortalecerá a nuestro condado en su conjunto. Agradezco su tiempo y consideración de este asunto. Espero ver el condado de Kings continuar prosperando como una comunidad acogedora y diversa que atienda las necesidades de todos sus residentes. Gracias.
Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Yvette. I will be translating Daniela's public comment. Good morning. My name is Daniela Peralta. I'm a resident of Avonale and have been for many years. I am here as a concerned member of our community and as a promotora or community health worker at Valley Voices to request interpretation services to better serve the needs of our residents who face language barriers. My job as a community health worker is to help bridge the gap between access to healthcare and resources and the community. But before I became a promotora or community health worker, I worked many different farm working and packing house jobs. My experiences, interaction with coworkers and community members have made me keenly aware of the challenges that many face accessing resources in Kings County. Many residents struggle to fully engage with vital public resources and programs due to language barriers. These barriers can result in misunderstandings, limited access to healthcare, educational resources, and legal services, and ultimately hinder our residents' overall well-being. By providing interpretation services, we can bridge these language gaps and promote inclusivity, equity, and accessibility for all members of our community. These services will facilitate better communication and enhance our ability to provide essential information and community engagement opportunities to all members of our community regardless of what language they speak or what other barriers to access they may have. I understand that implementing interpretation services may require an allocation of resources, but I firmly believe that long-term benefits will far outweigh the costs. Moreover, numerous grants and resources available at the state and federal levels can assist in funding such initiatives. I kindly urge the Kings County Board of Supervisors to consider the importance of implementing simultaneous interpretation services as an essential step towards building a more inclusive and equitable community. This move will not only empower our residents, but also strengthen our county as a whole. I appreciate your time and consideration of this matter. I look forward to seeing Kings County continue to thrive as a welcoming and diverse community that serves the needs of all its residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if anyone shared with you, they're based on the comments as well, and just moving forward, that the clerk is looking into some different scenarios, some costs, and also with the future of the chamber on what can be done.
Thank you.
Wanted to note he has been coming. That's been taking place over the last couple of weeks.
We appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Iva Chides.
So just stay up there.
My name is Yvette Chides. So my public comment, and I didn't write it out, so bear with me. So I became aware of the situation with the flea market at the drive-in on September 5th when folks came and addressed that issue. And from that, I gathered that Pedro didn't have the necessary permits to actually have that flea market running, right? And I understand that now, that should be discussed with Chuck. But my question, after looking at the zoning map and the allowable uses for that, is how willing, or if the Board of Supervisors would be willing to, if it was necessary, would they support, do you support the tax change to allow a flea market as an allowable use in that mixed parcel? That was all.
We'll have to get back to you, I actually can't.
Okay, thank you.
Can't pull the border, take a vote on something, sign all the agenda right now.
Okay, thank you.
It's being worked on. Thank you.
The next speaker is Yeraida James. I apologize if I didn't say it correctly.
Yes. Buenos dias. Ah, mi nombre es Yeraida Jaimez, y estoy aquí pues apoyando a Pedro en el remate de acá de Armona. Pues nosotros tenemos muchísimos años de conocerlo, pienso unos 15 años. Siempre hemos trabajado muy a gusto con él, desde que estaba en Tulare, y ahí se pasó aquí al rematito de la 10, aquí en Tiempo. Y de ahí fue cuando llegaron esas otras personas. Pues ahora sí, para nosotros es algo triste que lo hayan sacado porque estábamos trabajando muy a gusto con él. Nos quedamos ahí en la 10 todavía trabajando un tiempo. Nosotros le dijimos, usted encuentra otro lugar, nosotros lo apoyamos, nos vamos con usted porque trabajamos muy a gusto con usted. De hecho, ahí nos quedamos en la 10 a trabajar un tiempo, pero también el problema que hay ahí con los nuevos administradores, que los baños no tienen agua. La gente entra al baño y así como entra, así sale, entonces se me hace antihigiénico eso porque hay loncheras, hay fruta que van y toca la gente con las manos sucias. Las loncheras ponen sus verduras ahí para que le pongan a su comida, y así como salen del baño van y tocan las pinzas o las cucharas para la salsa, y no se me hace justo eso, no se me hace, pues es antihigiénico para la salud. Y pues no, o sea, eso es más que nada, es el problema también de ahí de la 10, deben de haber, deben ustedes eso, los del Departamento de Salud, que deben de chequear que debe de haber agua para que se laven las manos. Entonces cuando Pedro abrió allá en Armona, pues nosotros nos vimos para allá y estabamos muy a gusto hasta que pasó esto. No, no entendemos por qué no lo dejan trabajar. Esta señora lo trae desde Tulare. No, no entendemos por qué, no nomás este le está quitando el trabajo a él, sino también a nosotros que dependemos del remate. Eso es todo, en mi opinión.
Gracias.
To translate what she said. And sorry, I am not a simultaneous interpreter. I just am doing them a favor. So she was saying that she's known Pedro of Mr. Aguilar for 15 years. He used to be a vendor or run the swap meet in Tulare, and then he came over and he was the one that was kind of, you know, running the show at the Kings County Fairgrounds until the change of ownership and then management in May. And they told him, you know, if you find another place to go, we'll follow you. And so when he started this Armona one, they were pretty excited because one of the issues with the swap meet at the Kings County Fairgrounds is that the people turned off the water. So now when folks use the bathroom, there is no running water, so people just go back out and, you know, there's food vendors there, there's produce vendors there, and she believes that's very unhygienic. And, you know, she, as a vendor, who knows other food vendors, is aware of the fact that you have to have running water. That's a requirement for food vending. And she wanted to bring that to the attention of the board to just make sure, and the Health Department, to have somebody go out and check that out because not only is it not right, it's unhygienic.
Thank you.
All the speaker cards that I have, but it doesn't appear that anyone online has their hand raised, and I have to re correspondence.
Is there anyone in the chambers at this point that'd like to make an unscheduled Get you next, chief. Thanks, chief, for letting. Morning.
I got, we're all in back of Pedro because he, that is his living hood, and the people that went up to him, they're the same. They're the same, that they're going to the living hood. They have to, you know, do something, you know, the way that things are today, you just have to go to the swap meets to get some dollars here and there. You know, I'm not, I have a throat, my throat is hurting right now, but, you know, I hope you can see me. And he was our friend. He is our friend. And they went with him to Armona. Armona is a small, is a small town, and they need something like that, too. Yeah. And I don't know why they're picking on him. They took away the other one. Now they want whoever is in back of it. They try and take it away from him. You know, he's just, you know, he tried, you know, right away, when they took it away, right away he looked around to see where he could, you know, make a living, which he did. And I don't think that he just went and planted himself there, you know, to have a swap meet there. You know, he must have had a permission, you know, if it's in the district or not. You know, people, the people that followed him, they want him, they want him there, you know, and, you know, I don't know what else I can say, you know, but that, you know, that they're, they followed him because I was one of their, I was there, you know. And since, it was in April the 4th, April the 5th, when they opened the Kings, and we were one of the first ones. And afterwards, Pedro went, you know, he caught it, you know, and it was all right. He got it bigger and bigger, you know, and then that's when they came and took it away from him. And now they want to take it away from over there. Now what's going on? Who's in back of that? Somebody is making chili. Oh, okay, that's all I have to do. I'm sorry about my throat. You know, I don't know if you understood, you know, but there's a lot of people in back of him. A lot, some of them didn't come because they couldn't, but I went to the Elmas Flea Market and told them all, and they wanted to put their names, you know, to their names so I could bring them, but they were already packing, you know, so, you know, but they want, they want Pedro there because some of them went over there, and that's what's going on, you know. So that's all I can say.
You did a good job. Thank you. Appreciate you coming as well. Is there anyone else, chief?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, village, Kings County Department. Just wanted to give you a brief update on your fire department. Effective yesterday, all of our personal equipment returned from out of county responses. Everybody's safe, no equipment broken, good turnout, 21 days out. They did a good job. Fires are slowly going out of the state, so good thing. Another thing I'd like to point out is one of Mr. Boyet's earliest assignments was in fire, and we taught him everything he knows.
Good job. Good job. Anybody else? Go once, go twice. Okay. Thank you, ma'am clerk, for opening us. We've done scheduled. We'll close that out, and we're going a brief update minutes for items A and B. Report out a closed session for the regular meeting for August 29th, 2023, as well as a special meeting for September 7th, 2023. Counsel, do you have anything?
There's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Report out a closed session for the regular meeting for August 29th, 2023, as well as a special meeting for September 7th, 2023. Counsel, do you have anything?
There's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. With that, item C is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for August 29th, 2023. The Chair will entertain the motion, go move. Pushed by Fagundez, second by Robinson, Madam Clerk, will you please come to the row?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes. Thank you, item passes four in favor, one absent. Item D, approval of the minutes from the special meeting for September 7th, 2023. Second motion by Robinson, second by Fagundez, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Uh, Steve?
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Thank you, item passes three in favor, one extension, one absent. Takes sent counter, there's a lot of items this morning that have been publicized, all the agenda. Chair is ready to entertain a motion, there's no questions or comments. There are no votes, government will approve. Pushed by Fagundez, second by Robinson, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Uh, sent counter passes four in favor, one absent, takes two regular agenda items. Comes out of A, comes from the Human Resource Department.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Before we get started on our eleven items, I do want to take a moment to thank the Board as well as Administration, Teria and Matthew for all of your help with getting these fiscal impacts mapped out and your patience as we got all of these done. I want to thank the HR team as well, those that are here in the audience, as well as those who are still in the office who really worked hard to get these items on for agenda's today. And thank you to the clerk and the clerk to the boards because I know you guys are very patient with us as we got these on too. And the first one up today is Ashley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Ashley Hernandez, Personal Analyst. And I'm here today to recommend that the Board approve the new job specification for the County Health Officer position and set the salary as salary band designation one, fourteen thousand to nineteen thousand dollars monthly and allocate one full-time equivalent position. The County Health Officer will be a new classification that will serve as a designated County Health Officer and Medical Director of the Public Health Department. This classification will plan, organize, direct, and administer the medical oversight of the public health programs for the county and will provide technical consultations to citizens, public officials, staff, community organizations, and agencies on public health and preventative medicine. The Public Health Department would benefit from staffing a full-time County Health Officer. Depending on the qualifications, the cost of this new position from January 2024 to June 2024 will be approximately as low as ninety thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars or as high as one hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars for salary only. The cost will be absorbed within the department, so there's no impact to the general fund. The Public Health Department is currently utilizing a contracted professional service to fill this position. The current contract is set to expire on December 30th, 2023. However, the contract does include a termination clause of thirty days of written notification if the county is able to recruit a full-time employee. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
I have a question. So are you, are you, if you can't get a doctor to come on full-time, have you, you looked into a scenario of offering this part-time?
So we're, yeah, I was like, we are, I'll have Rosemary answer, but I know we are gonna, we are looking into the RFP process as well if we're unable to fill it.
Rosemary Ram, Public Health Director, yes. So if we cannot locate a full-time Health Officer position, the intent would be to go back to contract for part-time. Currently, we have a part-time contracted, it's one day a week in the office. We would like to have a few more days a week in the office if we could, just because of the capacity for the staff to have medical oversight.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Nothing, till I say motion. So movement, Chair. Post by downs. All second.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Item passes one favor, one absent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Danielle Lee, Personal Analyst with Human Resources. I'm here today to recommend that the Board authorize the Human Right Resource Director to sign two side letter agreements, one with the General Unit and one with the Supervisors Unit. The current memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with both General and Supervisors Unit is for a term starting July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. On August 16th, 2023, the County of Kings and the General and Supervisors memberships met and conferred to discuss an additional salary increase in the amount of one and a half percent as well as a ten thousand dollar recruitment and retention bonus for juvenile correctional officers one, two, three, and four. And that will also become effective September 4th, 2023. The ten thousand dollar recruitment and retention bonus for the correctional officers, like I said, will become effective September 4th, which is pay period nineteen, 2023, and will be paid on a pay period basis in the amount of one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents for each actively employed pay period concluding August 31st, 2025. The total cost of the implementation for the one point five percent cost of living increases for the remainder of the fiscal year is approximately eight hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. And the recruitment and retention bonus for the juvenile correctional officers for the remainder of the fiscal year is estimated at one hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars, of which will be paid for you, paid for using the county's ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act allocation. These costs have been included in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four final budget. Ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? No questions or comments, Mr. Chair, move for adoption. Down as, second by Robinson, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Item passes.
Perfect, we want to make sure we thank the General and Supervisors Unit as long, as well as Administration and the Board of Supervisors for all your help and patience through this process.
Thank you. Good job.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Adrian Lammy, Personal Analyst with Human Resources. I'm here today to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the new job classification for an Animal Shelter Technician Trainee in the Sheriff's Office. Approve the revised job specification for Animal Shelter Technician One and approve the recommended salary changes for the Animal Shelter Technician and Animal Control Officer. The Animal Shelter Technician Training Position was created in response to the difficulty in filling vacant Animal Shelter Technician One and Two positions in the Sheriff's Office. By adding the trainee level, this will allow the Sheriff's Office to hire individuals without prior experience. The trainee position will learn to perform a variety of clerical, technical, and animal contact duties in support of the operations of the Animal Services Division, to learn to coordinate the intake and release of animals and assist with the overall well-being, and to learn to provide administrative support and customer service for the division and front office with no previous experience required. Additionally, the Animal Shelter Technician One job specification was modified to include the ability to qualify with six months of experience as an Animal Shelter Technician Trainee. Effective this pay period beginning September 4th, 2023, the Animal Shelter Technician One will be set at salary range one fifty-four point five, which is sixteen dollars and thirteen cents per hour. The proposed range for Animal Shelter Technician Trainee is one fifty-four point zero, which is sixteen point zero five per hour. Human Resources recommends adjusting the salaries of the Animal Shelter Technician One and Two and Animal Service Officers One, Two, and Three by four point five ranges, approximately four and a half percent, due to compaction issues caused by the creation of the trainee position. The cost for increasing the salary ranges will be approximately thirteen thousand eight hundred and eight dollars for the remaining fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. This will affect the Sheriff's Budget for Assembly Bill 109, Animal Shelter, excuse me, Animal Services Shelter and Animal Services Field, approximately one thousand six hundred dollars will be covered by AB 109 and will not impact the general fund. Roughly five thousand eight hundred eight dollars is a direct general fund impact in the Animal Services Field budget. Of the remaining six thousand four hundred dollars accounted for in the Animal Services, Services Shelter budget, about twenty-seven percent is an impact to the general fund, with the remaining seventy-three percent being paid by the cities of Hanford and Lemoore. Therefore, Human Resources recommends that you approve the new job specification for the Animal Shelter Technician Training and set the salary range at one fifty-four point zero. B, approve the revised job specification for Animal Shelter Technician One and set the salary range at one fifty-nine point zero. C, set the salary range for Animal Shelter Technician Two at range one sixty-nine point zero. D, set the salary for Animal Control Officer One at range one sixty-nine point zero. E, set the salary for Animal Control Officer Two at range one seventy-nine point zero. F, set the salary for Animal Control Officer Three at range one eighty-nine point zero. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, any questions, comments? Move us out, like, Mr. Chair, unless you want her to read it again. All right, question by now, second by Fagundez, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Item passes more in favor, one absent, thank you.
Thank you.
Item four?
Yeah. Chairman, Members of the Board, Ashley Hernandez again. So I'm here today to recommend that the Board authorizes the Human Resource Director to sign the side letter of agreement with the Probation Officers Association. The county's current memorandum of understanding with the Probation Officers Association was approved with terms beginning July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. On August 16th, 2023, the county and the Probation Officers Association met and conferred to discuss an additional salary increase in the amount of one and a half percent and a recruitment and retention bonus, which will become effective September 4th, 2023, pay period nineteen. The ten thousand dollar bonus shall be paid to employees on a pay period basis in the amount of one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents for each actively employed pay period between September 4th, 2023 through August 31st, 2025. The side letter was ratified by the Association and staff recommends approval by the Board. The total cost of input, input, like, sorry, implement, I can't even say it. Implementation for the remainder of the fiscal year for the one point five cost of living increase is estimated to be sixty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the recruitment and retention bonus is estimated to be two hundred twenty-four thousand thirty-five dollars, of which will be paid using the county's American Rescue Plan allocation. These costs have been included in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four final budget. Ongoing costs beyond this fiscal year will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions or comments? Don't move. Second. Second by now, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Item passes one in favor, one absent.
Thank you, and again, I want to thank the Probation Association and admin and the Board for getting this approved.
Good work, Tag, thank you. Good, item bottom.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Danielle Lee, again, Human Resources. And here to recommend that the Board authorize the Human Resources Director and designated staff to sign a successor agreement with the Detentions Deputy Association for a term beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. For all classifications covered by this memorandum of understanding, the proposed agreement includes a two-point-oh range, approximately two percent salary increase, which will become effective September 4th, 2023, pay period nineteen, 2023. In addition to regular salaries, employees who have completed ten years of continuous full-time service with the county will receive longevity pay in the amount of three percent in addition to their, their regular salary. Longevity pay will be effective September 4th, 2023 or pay period nineteen. County contributions for health insurance premiums were also updated to reflect current rates that went into effect July 1st, 2023 and will be covered by a fifty-fifty split between the employee and the employer during the term of this agreement. The Christmas Eve holiday will also be increased from the four and a half hours to a full eight-hour day. Additionally, language is added to provide reimbursement for personal property damage destroyed or stolen while in the line of duty. The total cost of implementation for the two percent increase is approximately two hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. And longevity pay is approximately fifty-seven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for the remainder of the fiscal year. Ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, any questions, comments at this time? Motion by Robinson, second by Fagundez, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Thank you, item passes four in favor, one absent.
Thank you, we'd like to thank the Detentions Deputy Association, Admin, and the Board again for your support. Thank you.
Appreciate your help and patience, thank you. Item six.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Adrian Lammy, Personal Analyst with Human Resources. I am here today to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the side letter agreement with the Prosecutors Association. The county and the Prosecutors Association met and conferred to discuss an additional salary increase in the amount of one and a half percent and a recruitment or retention bonus for the Attorney One, Two, Three, and Four Child Advocacy and Child Support classifications, which will become effective September 4th, 2023, pay period nineteen. The revised side letter modifies the language to no longer require new hires to wait six months for the recruitment and retention bonus. It also adds a ten thousand dollar bonus for the Attorney One, Two, Three, and Four for Child Advocacy and Child Support classifications. It also adds language to move the current Attorney One, Two, Three, and Four Child Advocacy and Child Support incumbents from their current step to a step five of their current level. The recruitment and retention bonuses for the Attorney One, Two, Three, and Four Child Advocacy and Child Support classifications shall be paid to employees on a pay period basis in the amount of one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents for each actively employed pay period between September 4th, 2023 through August 31st, 2025. The total cost of implementation for the remainder of the fiscal year for the one and a half salary increase is estimated to be forty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And the recruitment and retention bonuses for the Attorney One, Two, Three, and Four Child Advocacy and Child Support classifications is approximately one hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, of which we paid for using the county's American Rescue Plan Act allocation. These costs have been included in the fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four final budget. Ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. Therefore, Human Resources recommends that you authorize the Human Resources Director to sign the side letter of agreement with the Prosecutors Association. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, thanks for getting us here. Questions or comments for the Board? Don't move. Post by Fagundez. Second, second by Robinson, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Thank you, item passes four in favor, one absent.
Thank you again, I want to say thanks to the Prosecutors Association, the Board, and the Admin for your support.
Thank you, good work everybody. Hey, that takes us out of seven.
Me again. Try to get through those. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Ashley Hernandez, Personal Analyst. I'm here to recommend that the Board approves the new job specification for the Environmental Health Technician Physician and set the salary range at one eighty-four point zero and allocate a one point zero full-time equivalent position. The Environmental Health Technician will be a new entry-level classification in the Public Health Department and will assist the Environmental Health Officer Series by performing routine, monitoring inspections and investigations of assigned environmental health program areas. This position is distinguished from the Environmental Health Officer Series by the performance of less complex tasks, less education required, and the absence of the California Department of Public Health Training Acceptance Letter and/or registered environmental health specialist certificate. Currently, the Public Health Department has eight allocated Environmental Health Officer One, Two, Three, Four positions, but they have four vacancies. Due to the difficulty in filling the environmental health allocations, the department is utilizing one current and one pending extra help Environmental Health Four to assist the department with efforts related to the recent flooding and staffing shortage. By adding a technician position, the department can train an individual who is working on their bachelor's degree to obtain the required certification. Additionally, to support recruitment efforts, this position will allow the Public Health Department to develop and train individuals internally. The cost for the new position for the remainder of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is approximately forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars for salary only. The cost will be absorbed within the department's budget, so there's no impact to the general fund. Additionally, the one point five salary increase effective September 4th was incorporated into the established budget, or sorry, established salary range. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or word? No question to come, Mr. Chair, move for adoption. Get your phone out, second by Fagundez, Madam Clerk?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Thank you, item passes one in favor, one absent.
Last one for me, I promise.
Good time.
All right, Ashley Hernandez again. I'm here to recommend that the Board authorize the Human Resource Director to sign the side letter of agreement with the Firefighters Association. The county's memorandum of understanding with the Firefighters Association expired on June 30th, 2023. The county and the Firefighters Association have began negotiations on June 22nd, 2023, but a successor agreement has not been met. On August 24th, the county and the Firefighters Association met and conferred to discuss the salary increase On August twenty-fourth, the county and the firefighters association met and conferred to discuss the salary increase in the amount of one and a half percent and recruitment and retention bonus, which would become effective September fourth, pay period nineteen. The ten thousand dollar bonus which will become, oh, sorry, shall be paid to employees on a pay period basis in the amount of a hundred and ninety-two dollars, thirty-one cents for each actively employed pay period between September fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The side letter was ratified by the association and staff recommends approval by the board. The cost of the remainder of the fiscal year for the one point five percent cost of living increase is one hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, and the recruitment and retention bonus is estimated to be two hundred, seventy-four thousand, seven, seven hundred and sixty dollars, which we paid for using the county's American Rescue Plan Act allocation. These costs have been included in the fiscal year to twenty-three, twenty-four final budget. Ongoing costs beyond the fiscal year will be absorbed within the department through the budget process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions or comments? Who or? Motion by Fagundez. Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk.
Joan Naves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundez.
Yes.
Pass more favor when I have.
All right. And thank you to the firefighter association, admin, and the board for making this happen.
Appreciate it. Everyone's up. Good work.
I think we're in the home stretch now here.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Danielle Leep, human resources, Personal Analyst. I'm here today again to recommend that the board authorize the human resources director to sign the side letter of agreement with the Blue Collar Membership of Service Employees International Union, or SEIU. The current memorandum of understanding with the Blue Collar Association was approved from November first, two thousand twenty-one, through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The parties have reached an agreement of provisions via a side letter agreement. On August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the county and the Blue Collar unit met and conferred to discuss a salary increase in the amount of one and a half percent, which will become effective September fourth, two thousand twenty-three, pay period nineteen. The total cost of implementation for the one point five percent salary increase for the remainder of the fiscal year is approximately forty-five thousand, seventeen dollars, of which will be paid for using the county's American Rescue Plan Act allocation. These costs have been included in the fiscal year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four final budget, and ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions, comments? Motion by Fagundez. Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk.
Joan Naves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundez.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll pass this one favor when I have.
Okay. We'd like to thank the Blue Collar Membership along with admin and the board again for your patience and support on these items. My next item, again, Danielle Leep, Human Resources, here to recommend that the board authorize human resources director to sign the side letter agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. The county's memorandum of understanding with the Deputy Sheriff's Association expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Negotiations began on June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, but a successor agreement has not yet been met. On August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, the county met and conferred with the detention, excuse me, the Deputy Sheriff's Association to discuss a one point five percent salary increase and a ten thousand dollar recruitment and retention bonus, both effective September fourth, two thousand twenty-three, or pay period nineteen. The ten thousand dollar bonus will be for all classifications covered under the agreement and shall be effective September fourth, two thousand twenty-three, pay period nineteen. The retention bonus shall be paid to employees on a pay period basis in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents for each actively employed pay period between September fourth, two thousand twenty-three, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, pay period eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. The total cost of implementation for the remainder of the fiscal year for the one point five percent cost of living increase is approximately one hundred, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and the recruitment bonus is estimated to be four hundred, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, of which will be paid for using the county's American Rescue Plan Act allocation. The costs have been included in the fiscal year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four final budget. Ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. And again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I move. Motion by Fagundez.
Second.
Second by Naves. Madam Clerk.
Joan Naves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundez.
Yes.
I'm pass this one favor when I have. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. We'd like to thank the Deputy Sheriff's Association and again admin and the board for all your support through these processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. Sorry. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Melissa Avalos, Principal Personal Analyst with Human Resources. I'm here today to recommend approval of the salary resolution, which reflects recommended and previous authorized classification and salary changes, including benefit changes to unrepresented management and the adjustment of salary bands one and two. The salary resolution is updated to reflect agreements with various bargaining units, additions and deletions of positions, and classification and compensation activities since the last salary resolution, which was approved by the board on July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. This salary resolution update also reflects a recommended one point five percent cost of living range increase for all unrepresented management, appointed and elected department heads, which would be consistent with the other bargaining groups that signed a side letter for the same cost of living increase that was just presented and approved by this board. Other benefit changes for unrepresented management include the following. Three percent longevity pay for the management classifications who oversee the employees of the detentions and the fire association, which would be consistent with the other safety management employees who are currently receiving longevity pay. In addition, of certification pay for fire management and changes to the rates for the fire stipend, which would now be expanded to the assistant fire chief. A ten thousand recruitment and retention bonus paid on a pay period basis for the management classifications listed in the applicable section of the salary resolution for that benefit. Finally, for a current employee who is a deputy county council one, two, three, or four, currently at a lower step than step five of their current range, would be automatically placed at step five of their current range effective September fourth, two thousand twenty-three, which is pay period nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. This would be a one-time adjustment for current employees in this classification. The total cost for the remainder of the fiscal year to implement the one point five salary range increase for management is approximately four hundred and three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Longevity pay is roughly twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, and the recruitment and retention bonuses are approximately one hundred, fifty-six thousand, four hundred and two dollars. The total cost of implementation for the fire management benefit changes is estimated to vary between twenty-six thousand and seventy-eight thousand, depending on the length of coverage a stipend is being paid for. These stipend costs will be absorbed by the fire department budget. A portion of the total cost for all unrepresented management changes will be paid out of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. These costs have been included in the fiscal year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four final budget. Ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. If you have any questions, I would be happy to address them.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Don't move.
Motion by Fagundez.
Second.
Second by Naves. I just want to comment anytime it says elected officials are given raises or cost increases. Doesn't apply to board seat, but it's out of one anyone. It might be reported on the state board because it all themselves a raise.
Yeah, I think I said elected department heads, but if I did say officials, I correct that by my party's. Just to clarify, fifteen years of sitting up here. Fair enough. Fair enough.
Board already got their hefty half percent raise. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have, I'm sorry, this was much of a community segment by Naves. Clerk.
Joan Naves.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundez.
Yes.
I'll pass this one favor when I have.
Thank you. Once again, we do want to just thank all the unions, the board, administration, and once again to our awesome HR team.
Yes. Now, thank you for moving on. I want to comment too, just that, you know, a lot of good business got taken care of here today. And so again, thank you to everyone, board, carriers, team, human resources, unions, the associations, anyone who helped, you know, just push conversations, keep the minds communications going, all that goes without appreciation. Coming out of pandemic, obviously, there's a lot of impact, especially to public safety, which the board has heard the last few months, especially when it comes to recruiting and retention. So, again, I think that's good use of the, of the ARCA funds. The board is also, before even doing this, took care of communities, took care of wiped out their debt from the pandemic. People are paying off their utility bills in Home Garden, Stratford, Catalin City, Armored Land. We helped out millions of dollars, small businesses, to help them recover out of the pandemic. And so, and now we're taking care of our employees. But that does mean that we see them as last in line. The board helped the community and, and so I think this, these money, especially to public safety, goes a long way and let the taxpayers of Kings County and the residents of Kings County knows that supporting the county takes the services of public safety for them very seriously. So, thank you again. We'll move on. I don't. B, comments from IT department.
Can I just add, I really do want to apologize. I do want to thank Amanda Holden. She's like the unsung hero in the background with all this programming for us. So I do want to thank her as well.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you. T, good morning, Mr. Devlin.
Good morning, Chairman Valley. Good morning to the rest of the board members. This is not an HR-related matter. This is John Devlin with IT. The overview, Kings County currently uses a product called GFI Land Guard for its vulnerability and patch management services. And following significant research and testing, it was found that Qualus offers a far superior alternative for both vulnerability and patch management services. This item requires board approval as the agreement exceeds the purchasing manager's fifty thousand dollar authorization limit. The recommendation is to approve the agreement with Qualus for vulnerability and software patch management for computers and servers for the term of five years effective upon execution by all parties. The fiscal impact, the funding for Qualus vulnerability and patch management not to exceed fifty thousand annually has been negotiated to a five-year agreement paid annually with no annual increases in cost and is included in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four's adopted budget in budget unit one, nine, five, five, zero, zero. Total expenses over the five years is not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand, which with fifty thousand in each of the fiscal years, starting with the current fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, ending in fiscal year, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Over the course of the year, IT has attempted to improve the remediation efficiency of the GFI Land Guard. However, we ran into multiple roadblocks along the way. There's slow performance, lack of support, and a failure to maintain the product, which is a critical concern to the overall security of Kings County computers and servers. Qualus offers some of the best vulnerability and patch management applications on the market. They're an industry leader and enable organizations to automatically discover every asset in the environment, including unmanaged assets appearing on the network, inventory all the software, and classify and tag critical assets. Just for example, when we did a demo on it, actually found all of our printers and patched them, which we'd never had ever with the other product. So that was something that was nice. Qualus Cloud Agent enables instant global visibility of IT assets, even the occasionally connected and virtual devices with up-to-date asset configuration data for security and compliance. County Council approves the terms and conditions in all respects, except insurance. Qualus has insurance that is of adequate limits and types, however, will not add the county until the purchase is complete. Risk management can't endorse the insurance policy until the county has been added to the policy. However, the county is at more risk by not having worked in vulnerability and patch management than accepting what the IT department perceives as a minimal risk to the county, which is the proof of insurance. The vendor has agreed to name the county as insured to their policy within five business days after proof of approval, which would be the first order. I will put any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Devlin. Any questions or comments for the board? Rusty Robinson.
What counties are currently using? Many of them?
Chris. Chris speak to that.
Yeah, Qualus is, as John said, a highly used product that's used by four to five hundred companies, counties, even state government. So it's widely used in the industry compared to the product that we're replacing, which is used by fairly few.
Any other questions?
I'm concerned now saying the state operates with it. But even with that understanding, move for adoption.
Motion by Naves. Second. Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk. Please call the room.
Joan Naves.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundez.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll pass this one favor.
Thank you.
Item C comes from the Public Works Department. We have three items to take up. Good morning, Mr. Cabrera.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. The first item I have before your board this morning is a recommendation to adopt the resolution accepting additional right-of-way along Houston Avenue on behalf of the general public. The need for this resolution and the additional right-of-way stems from the high-speed rail project going in that area, the utility company relocations in order to move one of the utilities, in this case, Ember or the gas company line, to, in order to move and relocate that utility under a franchise agreement, it would have to be within county right-of-way. So staff working with High Speed Rail and county council has prepared the resolution, which would allow that line to be moved. The location is in front of the current fire station on Houston Avenue. Access will still be allowed. Everything will proceed as usual. The only difference is now that there will be an additional right-of-way widened at that location in front of the fire station. There is no fiscal impact. This will fall under regular road maintenance as a right-of-way. And if you have any questions, if you have any answers.
Thank you. Anything from the board?
Don't move.
Motion by Fagundez.
Second.
Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk. Please call the room.
Joan Naves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundez.
Yes.
I'm pass this one favor when I have. Thank you. Next time.
Okay. Item number two is a recommendation from our Public Works Department to approve the plans and specifications for the new fabric shade structure at the Burris Park Amphitheater. County staff in coordination with the Burris Park Foundation and the Parks Department, along with engineering divisions under Public Works, has been working with the foundation. They have commissioned teeters, architects and engineers, the LLP, to prepare plans and specs. This project will be handled as a design build. So the plans that are provided are minor, and the contractor selected will provide the final design since it is a subjective design and project for that shade structure. The county has a relationship with the Burris Park Foundation. So this project will be, there is no fiscal impact. The foundation will cover the costs and the maintenance per the agreement between the County of Kings and the Burris Park Foundation. At this time, I'd like to invite representatives from the foundation to give just a brief summary or presentation on what the project entails.
Good morning. I'm Steve Bogan. I represent the Burris Park Foundation along with Joe Camara today. We, two years ago, we put up the amphitheater in the park to support our outdoor education program that I'm going to brag a little bit. Excuse me. We, last year, we served eight thousand students from Kings County. And just for our identification, we provide a free outdoor education program for any school student in Kings County. And so if anyone's in the audience and you have children in Kings County schools, make sure that you talk to their administrative support and have your kid come out to the park and enjoy a couple of really good teachers that teach all about outdoor ed. We plan to put up a shade structure. It's going to be a cloth, sailcloth. You have a kind of a description there in your packet. And we'd like to get it done as soon as possible. However, we know that government usually takes a little bit longer, and we're used to it. So if you would approve this, I think this would be a a great support so that we can have children in that amphitheater at noon when it's a hundred and ten degrees and have some cover on them. Good for heat and also good for sun protection. Any question?
Questions, comments, or? Don't move. First by Naves.
Thank you very much.
Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk.
Joan Epps.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes. Yes. I'm in passes for one favor, one absent. Thank you.
Why are we going to be him?
If we can grow it quick enough. You've got a little acreage out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrera.
You too.
Item number three before your board this morning is a request to cancel bid number 2023-51. This is the Avenal Cut Off Roadway Improvements Phase One project for construction. The project was currently out to bid, as was approved by the board at June 27th earlier this year. We put the project out to bid. We got a lot of response from interested contractors, a lot of questions, a lot of concerns regarding with the way we had the project set up. We went back, county staff or engineering division and our consultant, we looked at different alternatives. And we we think we've settled on a way where we can cancel and recommend cancelling the bid right now. Put it out to bid early December, so we're ready to start the next year. Some of the changes that are being made to the plans include some of the staging during construction for the detour. As mentioned previously, full access is going to be allowed on Avenal Cut Off. It'll kind of be three lane setup. Some of the widths, the contractors had questions regarding if they were able, if they were going to be able to get equipment and work comfortably in those areas. So we've made some changes to the plans, some changes to the grades, the crown of the road, reducing the amount of material that's going to have to be brought in. So the changes were beneficial. The questions from the contractors and their concerns, we feel are going to help the budget and constructibility of the project. That being said, we are requesting to cancel the bid, not open bids now. Since we're running close to the end of the year, cold weather, rain doesn't really allow for paving. So the request is to cancel this bid. We'll bring it back and hopefully advertise in December to be ready to go to construction early next year. So the recommendation is to cancel the current bid for the outlook.
Okay, thank you. You're communicating with Avenal City officials to get a lot to know about this as well.
We will. This is a phase one construction, so it's the the first portion of the county phase. We have been in talks with our consultant to add the City of Avenal portion to the design project.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate that question, comments. Motion by Robinson. Second. Second by Nevs, Madam Clerk. Will you please call the room?
Joan Epps.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Thank you. I'm in passes for one favor, one absent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Takes us out to D comes from probation department. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Valley, members of the board. Leonard Baker, Chief Probation Officer, here to present the renewal of the contract with Champions Recovery Alternative Programs Incorporated, specifically Samuel's House, to provide residential and outpatient substance use disorder treatment for males. Little history, in 2012, the program opened the doors to a 12 bed residential program for men. 2015, it expanded to 49 beds. The probation department supported the expansion originally using Community Corrections Partnership Funding. That funding has since shifted to Senate Bill 678 funding, which is money rehabilitation money specifically sent to probation. Evidence based programming for substance abuse, substance use disorder treatment services focus on relapse prevention, medication, compliance, life skills, health and wellness, to name a few. Specialized groups may also be utilized for programming such as parenting, community engagement, employment training, job readiness, socialization, identifying pro-social opportunities for engagement and a new direction, cognitive behavioral treatment, to name a few. Samuel's House offers temporary housing along with residential substance use disorder treatment focused on family reunification to assist clients in reducing criminal thinking and associated behaviors. The program offers a day reporting center on the premises, which places an emphasis on relapse prevention skills and personal responsibility for making positive life choices. The services provided are to assist clients in abstaining from alcohol and or drugs while increasing stability and structure within their own communities. Vocational and educational skills are also provided to assist in the restoration of the family and strengthening relationships. The program is sole sourced in that is Department of Health Care Services Licensed Residential Substance Use Disorder Program, Drug Medical Approved and provides clinically managed services in a supportive environment by certified and licensed providers. Therefore, it's recommended this board approve the agreement with Champions Recovery Alternative Programs Incorporated to provide residential and outpatient substance use disorder treatment retroactive from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. The amount of the contract is not to exceed 300,000, which is included in the 2324 adopted budget, probation budget unit Senate Bill 678. Not available for any questions. And I also have the Executive Director Frank Crease here also.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Chair, let's hear your motion. So movement, Chair. Mr. Devlin. Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk.
Joan Epps.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Thank you. And B comes from Sheriff's Office. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. I'm here before your board this morning to request to approve the agreements and authorize myself to sign the agreements with the School Resource Deputy Service Agreements for the Reef Sunset Unified School District, Lakeside Union Elementary School District and Armona Unified School District for the School Resource Deputy Services. Just a little history there. We started these agreements several years ago under a grant. Each of these schools split one deputy sheriff position, a third, a third and a third. And over the course of time, of course, the schools would like to increase that to each have a deputy on their campus going forward for this school year. One thing that's unique about a deputy sheriff position is although a school year is only 180 days, we use those deputy sheriffs that are assigned to school resource officer positions to backfill during holiday periods, vacation periods or in the summertime. And we've also used them to backfill in our major crimes task force to work on special cases. So throughout the school year, they spend their time at the school, but the rest of the year, we get the benefit of them helping us, you know, fill other positions. There is a cost associated with this agreement. The reason it's only adding two, even though we're talking about three school district is the one position is the one that already existed that was split amongst the three. So it would be adding two to get us for one full time at each of these school districts. The schools have been gracious enough to work with us over the course of these agreements and and they're not the only agreements that we have. We have other schools here in Kings County. We have a couple more schools that might be adding on as well. The cost for the two full time deputy sheriffs is $282,194 and the amount is offset by $141,097 in the revenue from the school in the share of cost agreements. The agreements have gone through county council and have been approved to their format. The these agreements mirror the other agreements that we have with the other school districts that have full time school resource deputy positions like Kings River Hardwick. And so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I appreciate Darren Ellis coming. I did not pay him to come today. But I do, it's always great to see his face. He's a very positive influence in our community and I appreciate that. I think he was the longest school resource deputy that we've ever had in the history of the sheriff's office so far. So we're hoping some people beat him out someday, but and so I do appreciate his comments. He really hit them right on the head. You know, we look at where we're at in society today. If there's ever a way to spend money to put more money towards kids and and a positive impact with kids, with deputies, with officers, this is the way to do it. And you think about other government entities that might be able to go into a school and have an impact. And and I would argue that it's hard to beat a school resource officer, a school resource deputy when they show up in uniform and you have that positive impact. And the example that Darren gave was great. You know, we we give all of our deputy sheriffs a cell phone and we encourage them to communicate, you know, after hours and not put in for overtime all the time. So that definitely impacts the budget. But I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I would request your board approve the agenda as outlined.
Thanks. We're the sheriff's. Questions, comments from the board? Sue Robinson. Have the needs grown or basically have they, have we just, we were lacking before?
You know, part of it was when we did these grants, we offered that these schools could each have one full position themselves. Obviously, that meant their share of cost was higher at the time. And so the need was there then. The school districts then didn't have the funds or weren't able to allocate the funds to that increase where others districts were. I think what we've seen, though, outside of just that piece of the puzzle, what we've seen in society over the course of the last 10 years is, you know, with the different violent acts that have occurred on school campuses. And there's that, there's that awareness that takes place where if you don't have good security measures in place protecting our children, you know, you're really at a shortfall. And so we have seen some additional calls for service in some areas. And I'll give you an example. Last year, at one of their Armona schools that was, is included in this agreement, there was a student with a rifle walking around. Luckily, it turned out to be a BB gun. And he was walking around the schools and they'd actually suffered a couple of windows that got shut out. And so we do see some things, you know, unfortunately, where more and more students have brought weapons on campus, vaping devices on campus. We also operate a program, you know, anti vaping, anti tobacco program on campuses. And it just, everything just seems to be increasing. Social media was mentioned, and that's probably the biggest hurdle that we see is, you know, in in my age, when we went home, we went home, we had a phone on the wall that you had to had to attach to to talk to somebody. In this age, nobody's ever shut down, nobody's ever shut off. And so when you see these small incidents on school campuses where students are engaging together on social media, those don't shut down, those go 24/7. And so the more access that we can have for kids to reach out to us, I think the better off we are. I know there are some costs involved and that's always a challenge, but we do everything we can to try to absorb things within our budget and, you know, stay within the budget that's allocated by your board. And and I do think this is a very positive thing for our community to to support.
Make sure. Any motions or say?
Moves outline, Mr. Chair, because I think there's a coffee shop downtown looking for Darren. I think they miss, miss his appearance. And so I think they've sent out a request to make sure he's okay.
Thank you. Sue Navs, second. Second by Fagundes, Madam Clerk.
Joan Epps.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. I'm in passes for one favor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Move the agenda along today. We'll get board member announcements. We'll start with Sue Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Continue to watch the taller length goes down about four inches in elevation. Chuck keeps track of how many square, square miles and acres. So it continues to receive. On August 30th, the Kings Waste and Recycling Meeting was held and reviewed all the reports and received all the updates. The new forklifts have arrived and and they're in operation and the grinder should be here in September as well as a new roll up. So a couple of new items coming on board. I just want to thank Admin and everybody that attended the ribbon cutting for the Kings building, the Kings and Steve Bogan already left, but I know his mom worked over there. And I'm just very proud of that building and proud of the way staff did everything and had the open house and opened their arms and allow everyone to go through that wonderful facility that I'm glad is still standing. So thank you, one and all. That afternoon, we were able to get on board. The Lomor Eagle Air Station kind of had a meet and greet. We also were able to tour the water treatment plant that is going under some, some changes and upgrades. It was only built in 1978, so I don't know why they want to fix it. Really good year. But and then all of the other improvements that are going on in the installation as well as some improvements they'd like to see in the future. A special meeting of the South Florida Kings was held also on the 31st and to seek approval to go out for another 218 election. The last 218 election failed. That will support the organization, a lower assessment, probably in the seven to nine dollar an acre range will be with a five, five year sunset. And we'll try to go back after the voters for support of that 218 process. The the previous 218 was for a $20 an acre assessment for indefinite period of time. So it did have its couple of problems. On Friday, September 1st, the San Joaquin Clean Energy Future Meeting was held at UC Merced. I attended by way of Zoom. The talk is about the change in opportunities of clean energy developments, especially in the valley. The valley has 10% of the landmass of the state, but hosts about 25% of the solar developments of the state. And it continues to be a good ground zero for a lot of the clean energy. And I, I mean by that, the solar as well as the biogas. The they anticipate 10,000 megawatt growth just in the next few years by 2030. I continue to tell them that local government's not the problem. If you want to get things done, it's going to have to be through the Department of Energy because that's where your bottleneck is currently. So, but I think all of the local agencies that deal with solar are certainly due on their part. West Hills College had a preseason volleyball schedule on, on the first as well. And quite a few teams, a lot of good action. It's going to be a great season, so we'll look forward to that. The Cal Viva Public Policy Committee meeting failed to establish forums, so we're going to have to have another special meeting later to adopt a couple of things that we need to do. Spent some time at the Madera County Fair. The Kings County Blood Drive that was held on September 7th collected 36 pints. That's up from the previous event. This allows the Central California Blood Center to help possible 108 people because of those donations. So I certainly want to thank the Health Department and everyone that rolled up their sleeves and donated blood. It's extremely important for us because that blood stays local. The Lomor High School Football Game versus Sanger wrapped up on September and that wraps up pretty much the September schedule. All the games are away now, so we'll have a couple of, couple of weeks off. Devastating fire in Stratford over the weekend burnt two homes, no injuries, but total losses of two structures. It was in the older part of town, those structures were probably built in the late 30s, early 40s. It had some structural problems. So, you know, just glad nobody got hurt. Then on Saturday, we went to Avenal, walked at the health fair. We'll walk from Veterans Hall up to City Hall and back about a mile and a half. Very nice event in Avenal on Saturday night. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue Navs.
Also, Kings Waste and Recycling Meeting and that was good meeting for, for informal. And then also the open house for the hospital here, the old hospital. It was, that place really impressed me, the way they done the construction of that. It was, it was well done and it looks nice. And a lot of people are really, really excited about that instead of tearing it down. But it looked nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue Robinson.
See, a couple Tuesdays ago, I met with Jeff Garner again and Frank Ruiz from Champions. We talked about homeless homelessness and transitional housing. Wednesday, August 30th, I had the pleasure of welcoming back the Kings Building with the old hospital building, as, as was mentioned. And my line is I had nothing to do with it, but I'm so proud of it. I'm so glad we brought it back. On Friday, the 8th, well, thanks to Alex Walker and administration staff, attended the Grizzlies game with, with my kid, about 500 employees, I believe. So, all right. And unfortunately, once my kid found the water slides, the ballgame was over for us. And lastly, on Saturday and Monday, I was back to the soccer complex for me as I've now been promoted to assistant.
Thank you. Good times. Don't forget the pre-subs.
That's my job, I'm the shirt boy.
I'll just try and get a hat. Yes, sir.
I think they're, after you get done with your comments, I think there's.
Thank you. Well, just wanted to note, trying to get a head start on Operation Gobble, for those who are asking. Operation Gobble will be back again. I think this is going to be here, the 22nd year. And so look forward to being out in those communities and hoping for a Thanksgiving meal. And so look forward to being out in uh, in those communities and uh, hoping to provide a Thanksgiving meal uh, to a lot of those families who've been uh, blessed to be able to help out over the years. So that's a lot of work, it's a lot of organizing. And uh, it starts with that.
It's up to the second.
What did she want?
He just had, I don't know, you know. My name is Mary Wong.
Oh.
Uh, a home garden, David Home Garden, and it needs a, a lot of attention.
Oh, you're.
A lot of attention.
You're bringing that from uh, somebody else or that's where you live?
No, I live there.
Okay.
I live there. I didn't know how to speak. I didn't want to interrupt you about that when I know other things better I did, but I live there. Our, our, our home almost burned down with all the mess that was there. Lots that are, you know, bushes. Our house next door burned down and ours almost dead. There's a lot of things, not just that. I've come, I've come to here to Cal Viva and all of them. And, I think. There's nothing left. They just put away. You live there, you stay there.
Represent Home Garden.
What?
Represent Home Garden, if you don't know. So we've done a lot of work in Home Garden. As a matter of fact, this past week, we just worked to pay off your debt uh, for utility bills. Uh, coming out of the pandemic, there was a lot of money. We helped put that in the park that's there. We're doing a lot of work there. As far as those homes that burned down, um, I worked with our county departments on that. Those homeowners, the people that, all those lands, they get notified. Uh, if the county has to go there and clean it up, those people get billed and lanes get on their um, uh, their tax lanes, uh, get levied on their way. And so uh, we work closely with your elected officials for Home Garden. Uh, Mr. Reed being one of them and uh, your new chairwoman in your community services district. And so um, if, if you're not attending those meetings or communicating with them, then you'll have your bill to call me directly. I'll give you my card with my cell phone after the meeting, but I, we do a lot of work there. It's hard to hear that. Uh, someone says it's being a big boy.
Yep.
Yeah.
They buy and then they just leave them there. And then they get, you know, so much, you know, mess and then they go and put paint in there, you know, like a dump, you know, they just, there were mattresses in the, in the street at one time. And I called them, you know, and it's just.
Thank you. Um, with that, uh, back to CAO. Would you like to continue, Board Correspondents?
Some Board Correspondents, Board Received, the August twenty twenty-three monthly Kings County Investment Full Transaction Activity Report from Director of Finance. It was dated September first. For upcoming events, the City of Hamper, together with the Hamper Chamber of Commerce, will host a free concert in the park on September twelfth, which is and nineteen tonight from six to nine P M. JTO will host a, it's Kings County Job Fair this Thursday, September fourteenth from nine to one P M at the Hamper Civic Center. Kings County Commission on Asian will host their senior carnival park event on Friday, September fifteenth from nine A M to two P M at Burris Park. The Sarah Moody Museum will host Legends of Lamar Cemetery Walk on September thirtieth at nine A M and ten thirty. And the Links for Life Pink Passion Pigment is on Tuesday, October seventeenth. And lastly, there will be a free Kings County Public Safety Event that will take place on Thursday, October nineteenth from five to seven at the Kilmann's City Park. There will be barbecue and information on many services that Kings County offers. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for September nineteenth next week. Ag has study session on the release of twenty twenty-two agricultural crop report. Behavioral Health has an item regarding a downstairs hire. County Council has an item regarding an appointment of three directors. And the DA has a item regarding a proposed contract for legal services. And lastly, the sheriff has an item regarding a firearm purchase. Thank you for my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So uh, thanks again, everybody. I was for a long meeting. Uh, the board's going to do a adjourned. We have some items on a going on just a second. Turn it, please. So uh, people online here, just close out the record. Uh, board's going to close session. There's a number of um, uh, items that's listed on there publicly and the board will be back. The next scheduled meeting on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.